I'd like to call to order the Westmont Village Board Meeting of November 19th, 2020, and ask, at 6:00 PM, and ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerk's here. Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
He may not be able to participate tonight.
Right. Trustee Brady?
He is not online yet.
Okay. Trustee Guzzo?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
He is here.
Trustee Zemanek?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Okay, we've got a quorum. Would everybody please rise and join me in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone to tonight's meeting. It is a hybrid, so we have some of the board participating over the Zoom, and the rest of us are here. So at this point, I'd ask Manager May if we have anything for open forum that has been sent in.
There are none, sir.
And seeing nobody here, I'll close open forum, and we'll move on to reports. And my report is first, and I did mention the virtual village meetings. We will continue to have this, especially in light of the fact that we're going more restrictions effective tomorrow. We will continue with this until such time that we can all be here. I'm going to ask Fire Chief Riley to give us a COVID-19 update.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Unfortunately, my news, as always, is not very good news lately. Today, unfortunately, 14,612 new cases, along with 168 new deaths. That brings the cases in DuPage County to 35,664, along with 661 deaths. 941 cases in Westmont, and unfortunately, 169 new cases in the last 14 days. So we're certainly on the rise in our own home community here. DuPage County daily case rate is averaging 700 daily. Back in May, we were about just under 200, so we're almost three and a half times that rate. We really need to work together and turn this around, everyone. There are severe outcomes. Hospital emissions are way up. I know the three local hospitals of Hinsdale, LaGrange, and Good Samaritan are almost at max capacity. As I reported two weeks ago, the cases by age group of 20 to 39 in the last two weeks now has skyrocketed, still followed by the 40 to 59-year-olds. The DuPage County Health Department, along with the governor, is strongly discouraging holiday gatherings other than your immediate family household. If spouse or family members are positive, CDC, DuPage County, and the governor are strongly recommending that workers quarantine for a minimum of 14 days from the last time you were with an affected family member. Sites along Illinois, and especially in DuPage County, the testing sites are slammed. As I've reported in the past, the PCR testing is considered the gold standard with the highest reliability. And really, only positive news is this, is there is a vaccine development that is in the works. However, this still needs to be approved by the FDA. So as we, you've all heard, and the manager and the mayor have spoken, we are going to Tier 3 resurgence mitigation, starting basically tonight at 12:01, which for some, all bars and restaurants must close at 11:00 PM starting tomorrow, and may not reopen earlier than 6:00 AM. No indoor service whatsoever. Also, indoor video gaming terminals must be suspended for operations. And health and fitness centers, no indoor group classes, and face coverings must be worn at all times, including while engaged in individual exercise regarding a personal or machine space. Hotels, obviously, can only have 25% of their capacity. Their fitness centers must be closed at all times. And finally, all indoor gaming and casinos must close, why we are in Tier 3 mitigations. So lastly, everyone, again, my final message is, we really need to work together. We need to work harder now, more than ever. We need to wear a mask. We need to watch your distance. And finally, we need to wash our hands. That's my report for you, Mayor. Unless you or the board, or anyone has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No, I thank you, Chief. When you mentioned that the bars or restaurants cannot open, that's all for outdoor consumption, and if not, they can't serve. There's no indoor service.
That's correct. No indoor service whatsoever. It can only, outdoor seating, six feet apart. Reservation should be made, but all restaurants, effective tomorrow morning, must close at 11:00 PM and cannot reopen prior to 6:00 AM the following day.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Moving on, Westmont Police Department accreditation presentation. And this is always exciting, and I'll have Chief Gunther talk about the process.
Thank you, Mayor. So to kick off the 99th year birthday, moving into the 100-year anniversary, I guess we get to go first, which is kind of nice. I want to introduce a few people up at the podium with me. From the Highland Park Police Department, we have Chief Jogman. He is the second Vice President of the Illinois Chiefs of Police Association. He is a former assessor for his police department, and he is currently an assessor for the ILEAP program. He was not one of our assessors that was here during the onsite assessment, but he reviewed the material that was forwarded by the assessors, and is here to present us with a plaque, because apparently we passed, so we're pretty happy about that.
Secret's out, yes.
Exactly. Most importantly, he had to travel in rush hour traffic from Highland Park down south to Westmont, and we certainly appreciate the travel for tonight's event. I also have Sergeant Gomorzac at the podium. He is our accreditation manager. Without him spearheading the effort, it would have, he did a great job. So, I mean, the lion's share of credit goes to Sergeant Gomorzac for being our point of contact and the person that put the accreditation process in motion. Deputy Chief Thompson's way in the back. He did a little bit of the work, but not a tremendous amount of the work. So he also here gets credit. The process started, you know, probably shortly after I became chief in 2016. It took a long time for Sergeant Gomorzac to go through the process of going through all of the policies and the procedures, and the equipment, the training, everything that goes along with accreditation. So because of COVID, the timeline was elongated. Our mock assessment, which is one of the criteria for going through the process, was completed last December 2019, with our onsite then in June of 2020. And that was obviously a COVID-induced onsite, so we took all the precautions, which took a little bit while longer. So we, you know, why is accreditation important? We stay current with the best practices through policy and procedure. It's efficiency with the way we operate, and to really, you know, it's a workflow system approach to getting our jobs done, and most importantly, accountability. This is a way of subject matter experts to come to the police department and put us to the test to make sure that what we put on paper is what we do in practice. So along with those three components, there's also a timeliness element to accreditation. Obviously, with the civil unrest that's been rocking the nation in the last six months, there's a renewed scrutiny for law enforcement and practices. And really, being accredited stays ahead of the curve. And as the mayor and the manager can attest, probably in the middle of summer, we received a lot of correspondence through voicemails, emails, phone calls directly, neighbors talking about it, really wanting to know the meat and potatoes of how their police department operates. And they came to the mayor and the manager with specific recommendations. It was my job to show that we had already, we were currently doing all the things that were requested by the public. So, you know, whether it's use of force issues, de-escalation techniques, duty to intervene, cultural competency, or mental health awareness, we, you know, we proved to everyone that these are the things that we believe in and that we practice on a daily basis. So we had the onsite in June, and that was a process that had two assessors come to the station. So they did onsite interviews. They checked the policies. They talked to the mayor and the manager. They talked to labor representatives of the Fraternal Order of Police. They did ride-alongs. They checked, they did audits on petty cash and our official advance funds in the detective division. They came up with some really good recommendations. We followed all the recommendations, and we got a perfect 100% score on the 180 policy, 180 criteria for passing accreditation. So with that, I will turn it over to Chief Jogman for his comments, and then the presentation of the plaque.
Thank you, Chief Gunther.
Good evening, Mayor Gunther and Village trustees. My name is Lou Jogman, from the Highland Park Police Department. And Chief Gunther gave you a very good synopsis of the program. And I'm so pleased to be here tonight with your staff and with the Westmont Police Department. We talked about accreditation and how timely it is right now, and it certainly is, because accreditation really helps for current law enforcement professionals to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of the delivery of their law enforcement services. And these established standards really address and reduce liability for the agency and for its members and for your community. So it really is an important process. And the Illinois Chiefs have really put together a rigorous set of standards based on current best practices. And, you know, as discussed, there are 180 standards that your police department was required to meet. And they went through an onsite, as we talked about, as the chief talked about. So upon completion of the onsite assessment, the lead assessor submits a report to the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Council for review and approval. I'm pleased to say that the Westmont Police Department joins 38 other Illinois police departments and has met or exceeded all the requirements for accreditation by the Illinois Law Enforcement Accreditation Program. But even more noteworthy for Westmont is the fact that your agency elected to strive for a Tier 2 accreditation. So there's a Tier 1 and a Tier 2. Tier 1 requires compliance with 67 standards, and you're still accredited, and they're the meat and potatoes of standards. However, your department decided and elected to strive for the Tier 2 requirement. And that is 180 standards, and it is a higher bar. A higher bar indeed, which puts Westmont in the company of a much smaller group of select police departments throughout the state of Illinois. So you should be very, very proud of your department for them to receive this level of certification. In light of all the national recent discussions regarding law enforcement best practices, Westmont PD's willingness to participate in an accreditation program and to meet or exceed these standards speaks highly of their professionalism and of their commitment to this community. The Illinois Chiefs of Police Association congratulates the Westmont Police Department on this significant accomplishment. And in speaking with Chief Gunther earlier, I learned it's your 100-year anniversary, which is fantastic. I think this is a wonderful accomplishment to tie into that 100-year anniversary, so congratulations on that. And I must echo what Chief Gunther said. The work that goes into this, it is a labor of love, and it is a long process. And, you know, it's not made easy at all by design. It's made very challenging, very rigorous. So the staff that you have here at the department and their ability to accomplish this really, really speaks volumes about the level of professionalism that you have going on in this department. And again, I think the community and the residents should be very, very proud. So with that, I would like to just read the plaque. Chief, if you'd like to come on over. Okay, so we'll do it this way. "Westmont Police Department: The Illinois Accreditation Council verifies that the Westmont Illinois Police Department has policies, procedures, and daily routines that achieve the level of Tier 2. This signifies that the department is in full compliance with the professional standards of modern law enforcement." And it was dated July 28, 2020, when initially it passed, and we just now got to meet each other. James Gunther, Chief of Police, and Sergeant Craig Gomorzac, Accreditation Manager. Congratulations.
Even with that mask, I can see the big smile on her.
Sergeant, you got to get up. You did the work. Thank you.
Okay, there you go.
Well, thank you. Congratulations. Fire Department has nothing on you.
No. Just the two chiefs.
We say it all the time.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Chief.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I think Chief Gunther mentioned that this is part of the celebration, the 99th anniversary leading to the 100. I have a couple other items in regards to that. The Future of Westmont presentation. I'm going to ask Larry McIntyre to introduce Sabrina...
Sebastian.
Sebastian. Larry?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I would like to introduce Sabrina Sebastian. You may have heard her name before, actually, because she has participated in many of our contests over the years, including our Best Mont Contest, our Arbor Day Contest. And she is currently a freshman at Hinsdale Central. Previously, she was at Westview Hills, and she is a Westmont resident. And so with that, I'd like to introduce Sabrina. If you want to unmute your microphone, and would like to have you read your essay about the future of Westmont.
The Future of Westmont. 2121, a year so close, yet so far. What will life be like? How will society act? We won't certainly know these things right now, but one thing is for sure, and that is that the village of Westmont will never change. From the family-friendly restaurants to the cruising nights that deliver some intense beats, from the closeness between neighbors and friends to the yearly holiday celebrations that never end, from the amazing schools all around us to how open and ready everyone is ready to discuss. But on the other hand, we need to think realistically, too. There'll be less water on the planet due to the careless amount we waste today. In order to have enough water, we will need to understand how much we waste today with different tractors, with different trackers, to see how much a household uses. There'll be alternate ways to receive electricity, too. For example, we will be more accepting towards using solar panels and wind turbines. So when we're driving down the street by Cass Avenue, maybe it'll be full of energy sources. Or maybe, just maybe, there'll be machines taking over the land. We are slowly moving in that direction, anyway. Wherever you look, there'll be a robot greeting you. If you're at the hospital, the store, anywhere. Even though 2121 is in 200 years, things will change as time moves on. Pollution will come to an end. We'll learn how to get past our global warming dilemmas. But these are issues that we will get past together as a country. And Westmont might be a small part of this country, but we are a small, mighty village. These are all indeed scary thoughts, but our current generation shapes our future ones. The choices we make today affect our tomorrow. Who knows if we'll even have it tomorrow? Time slowly takes away, and we need to progress forward day by day. 200 years may come with change, but Westmont will always be the same. We will remain as a close family, with amazing food, friends, and especially love. Westmont is small but mighty, and we will always remain this way in our own special way. We will always be the progressive village of Westmont.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, Sabrina, thank you so much. That was awesome. And I should mention that the Future of Westmont Contest is part of our historical murals. And so for those who maybe are unaware, for the past four years, our local artist, Fanny Moy, has created four historical murals. Each of the murals depicts a different era of Westmont's history. However, the final mural is going to be the future of Westmont. And so artist Fanny Moy is going to use material and submissions from people like Sabrina, and that will go into the final mural, which will be debuted next year on the 100th anniversary. So once again, thank you so much, Sabrina.
Thank you. The next item is the Westmont Public Works Dedication Ceremony, a recap, which was held on our 99th birthday, and I'd invite Mike Ramsey to talk about that dedication ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. It was a great day. It was a day we've all been looking forward to for a long time, and it was also a great day to be able to kick off and start our 99th anniversary. To meet the social distancing, we actually had had two ribbon cuttings that day. In the morning, we had our first ribbon cutting, where we had our public works staff come out, and we actually did the ribbon cutting for them. We were able to thank them for all their hard work and support during this construction, and inconvenience for them to start moving into this new building. The second ribbon cutting was to thank, you know, our mayor, department heads, the village board, for everything they've done for us to get this building, to have this building be able to be built. So it's been a great day. It was a great ribbon cutting for both events. The mayor kicked off the beginning of the ribbon cutting by discussing everything that needed to be, that we needed to do to have this building be built, especially all the support from past mayors, current mayor, department heads, village boards, past village boards. There's a lot of people that had to come together to make this happen, and we really are grateful for everything you've done. And then Manager May stepped in and started talking about the history of how we got to this point. It wasn't an easy way. We started back in 1999, and it took, you know, over 20 years to get to where we're at now. And a lot of different locations we had to find to finally finalize the location we're currently at. And, you know, there was a lot of work involved, and he started that back in 1999. Like I said, it took a while to get there. And then finally, I discussed the history of public works, how it was a total team effort to build this building. A lot involved, not just with staff, but, you know, every department had played a part in being involved with this, from the police chief, fire chief, finance director, community development director, IT, human resources, village hall. Everybody played a part in getting this building built, and very grateful for all the help they gave us. We would like to, hopefully this year, depending on what's going on with COVID-19, we'd like to have an open house sometime this year, so we can share this beautiful building and have residents come and have, join a celebration with us this year on the grand opening of the building. We'll have to wait and see, but that's the plan, is sometime in 2020, to have an open house, so all our residents can enjoy this building as we do. Thank you.
Well, thank you. It was an exciting day for us to have our new public works facility. Westmont Historical Book Update. We're going to announce that the Westmont History Book, titled Images of America: Westmont, written by Westmont resident Maggie South, is finished. People can order the book online. Order information is on the village website at westmont.illinois.gov. Printed copies of the book will be available starting January 4. The Historical Society Photos, donation to Village Hall. The Historical Society has printed, framed, and donated historical images to the village of Westmont to be hung at Village Hall. Larry McIntyre, do you have some pictures to show us, images?
Yes, I do, and here we go. So as I mentioned, this timeframe for our historical era coincides with our current era. So these are all photos from 1980 to present, so they might not feel like history compared to some of the old black and white photos that we've received in the past. But 20 years from now, absolutely, these will be the biggest, exciting things of our current history. So the first one here, of course, is a part of Holly Days, and it's the Rotary Club's ugly sweater, 5K. Another photo is going to be the groundbreaking ceremony for the new public works facility, and of course, it's fitting to have all the public works staff in that shot. Of course, our sister city. This is still, you know, kind of new for us. We've only been involved with this relationship to this detail for the past five years, but it's been amazing. And so one of the photos that's part of this is a group of dancers and singers, actually, who came from Taiwan and performed at our Westmont High School. I think they've done that four or five times now. Anyone who's watched those events have been absolutely amazed, and it's a wonderful part of our Sister City program. Cruising Nights. While this is something that began in the late 1990s, in the last, I would say, seven years, it has completely flourished, and that coincides with the village board agreeing to close down Cass Avenue on Thursday nights during the summer. And it led to WGN Radio saying, "We have the best weekly car show in the Chicagoland area." So that's one of the photos that's featured. Also, we're the only community to have the slider search for the U.S. Olympic Luge Team come to our town six times. And this is one of the shots from one of those events. And most recently, the FMC auditorium, while this only happened a month ago in terms of the ribbon cutting ceremony, I think, I think we all think that this is just going to be amazing for the community and obviously a historical event. So every year for the past four years, the Historical Society has printed and framed historical photos and donated those to the village of Westmont, and then we put those throughout Village Hall. So those are this year's submissions.
Thank you. And also tonight, the last item on the 100th anniversary, we're going to unveil the logo. So I have this in front of me. This is the logo for our 100th anniversary celebration. Very well done. So, thank you. I have one more item.
Go ahead and, I'll go ahead and put that up full screen, so people can see that real quick. All right, thank you so much.
Very nice. Thank you. I have one more item to do, and I'd like, Manager May, if you can come out in front here with me. Well, oh, it's upside down. I've got a plaque to give you. And the village of Westmont honors Stephen May, village manager, member of the village administration department, 1986 to 2000, and we lost you for a couple of years, 2003 to 2020. It's recognition of 30 years of dedicated service to the community. Congratulations. I'll do one of these. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. You want to say anything?
I do not.
No, I didn't think so.
Means you're getting old.
And again, that concludes my report. Now I'll turn to Clerk Simmsky.
I have some important announcements here. So due to the COVID-19 resurgence, beginning Monday, November 23, Westmont Village Hall will be open to the public from noon to 3:00 PM, Monday through Friday, on regular business days. The Village Hall will be closed for all typically observed holidays, including Thanksgiving, which will be Thursday and Friday. This modified schedule will be in place at least through Friday, December 4. You can make payments, bill payments, on our website, using, making, make a payment icon on the village's homepage, or bill payments can be dropped off... on the village's homepage, or bill payments can be dropped off via the Village of Westmont after hours drop box located near the commuter train station. So we will keep you advised to any changes on that. Again, I will announce that candidate packets are still available for pickup at the clerk's office. It's for the April election. Positions include the mayor, the clerk, three village trustees, and three library trustees. Candidate petitions can go out and obtain signatures now, although you'd have to, and that's the majority of my, oh, I wanted to mention the Lions Club Pancake Breakfast, that is this coming Sunday, November 22nd, it's a drive-up, it's a fundraiser for the Lions, and you can sign up at westmontlions.com. And that's all I have, thank you.
And thank you. Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is scheduled for December 17th at 4:30 p.m. It's probably a hybrid, but we'll see as we get closer. Another big update is that there's free leaf collection. Now until November 27th, you can put out an unlimited number of leaves in craft paper bags for free pickup. So free pickup between now and November 27th, put them in bags, there's no limit. We already heard a good update on our public works building, but just to reiterate what an exciting day that was, and what an exciting project for the village, I'm sure it's the biggest municipal project, I think, in the county for this year, which is pretty remarkable. So congrats to all those involved, what an awesome facility. If you haven't seen any photos, check them out on the website. Another good update, alley C is 100% complete and open for public use, another beautiful alley, please check it out and use it. These are awesome improvements to the infrastructure in the downtown, and I hope we can keep funding those alley projects in the future. And then last, I'm sure a lot of us have seen the Holly Days lights in Reese, although a lot of them are up so far, it'll be completely finished, and lights will be on by Friday. Already received a lot of compliments and texts from folks seeing what's out there, and I think it's just a nice touch. So thanks to all the staff in public works that really spent some time putting, I know it's putting some L's on a lot of people's faces. That is all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Nero, and I'll turn to Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. We had an administration and finance committee meeting earlier this afternoon. Finance Director Parker updated the board with our current financial shape in Westmont. We are currently in good shape, but the next few months may adversely affect this report, we'll wait and see. Kind of keeping an eye on it monthly, and it's not something that we take lightly, we really look into this carefully. Discussion was held on the local business economic relief, this information will be passed along to the restaurants tomorrow morning. Information was imparted to us regarding InfoSend, our e-billing firm, which will be able to send our water bills electronically only now, so that's an improvement. Next, the Westmont Special Events has published several Thanksgiving-themed virtual events on the village website, and again, on Facebook. They're going well so far, we have a favorite recipe, we have Thanksgiving-themed crafts, we have children coloring, downloadable pictures of a turkey, and a turkey scavenger hunt. So be on the lookout for that information, it shows up daily on Facebook. Not to forget the Holly Days Drive-Thru Breakfast, as Clerk Simmsky mentioned, what we want to make sure that you order your tickets for the Holly Days breakfast on Sunday. I have my ticket, I will be there right at 8 o'clock, pick up my breakfast. You can pick up your tickets in advance, they don't have a limited number to pick up on Sunday morning, so if you don't get your tickets in advance, you can still pick them up on Sunday, but come early, eat often. And then last but not least, the Holly Days Food Drive, beginning November 22nd, which is Sunday till December 17th, drop off non-perishables at the park district, the library, the police or fire departments. These all benefit our local People's Resource Center. Mayor, that's all I have, thank you.
Well, thank you. Trustee Marie Johanna Guzzo.
Thank you, Mayor, just a few things this evening. I want to echo my congratulations to the police department on their Tier Two accreditation, I want to say job well done, thank you. The next Public Safety Committee meeting will be next year, so stay tuned for that. And then I also want to wish everyone a happy and safe Thanksgiving holiday next week, please be safe out there. And Mayor, that's actually all I have tonight.
Well, thank you. Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. The Environmental Improvement Committee will meet in December, that will be an electronic remote-location Zoom meeting, and we had an event, a pumpkin composting event that was quite successful, we had 249 cars participate, they collected over five and a half tons of pumpkins, filled the dumpster, I want to thank the committee for their work there, and really compliment the folks that take advantage of that and take that stuff out of the landfill. We currently have a Holiday Lights recycling going on through January 31st, and that's at a library location in the South Fire Department headquarters. And then we have a cooking oil recycling event that begins on November 28th, from 9:00 to noon at the Downers Grove Sanitary District. Environmentally, people are taking advantage of those things, and we're excited about that. That is all, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barry is not with us, so I'll give his report, it's the Economic Development Committee and a Community Development Committee Chair, he is. Our EDC, or Economic Development Committee, meetings have been canceled through the end of this year and also in the next year until we have a favorable to meet here at Village Hall. So at this point, the committee has been put on hold.
Put on hold.
The Community Development Committee. Items on the agenda of the December meeting of Planning and Zoning include draft new rules for parking in a downtown B1 district, draft new rules for parking at multi-tenant commercial building, strip malls, a request for a fence variance for the property in the southwest corner of Ridge at 63rd, and a request for the required special use permit for hair salon business to move into an available space at 22 North Cass. These items will be reviewed at the December Planning and Zoning meeting before they are presented to the village board. And now I'll call on Trustee Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to talk about the downtown Westmont business. I notice the news is going up right now because of the virus. The fire department, community development department, the administration department, and a chamber is continuing to work with the local businesses that request tents for outdoor seating. These requests have become more challenging as more businesses want to have heaters inside these tents, which can present a fire and a life-saving concern. Staff has continued to work with these businesses that want tents, also ensure any tents are permitted safe, because we all know safety is everyone's job. What can you like to add, Mr. Mayor? The Chamber of Commerce normally has a winter ball every year, but because of the situation of the virus, what they're having is a Westmont Holiday Raffle, and it'll be launched on December 5th. It'll be a virtual holiday celebration with Santa Claus and the District 201 Police Club will be there, Salt Creek, LA, on Zoom. So we're hoping that everybody could buy their tickets at westmontchamber.com. It's a benefit for our chamber, you know, for Westmont, our own town. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Brady. Moving on, items removed from the consent agenda. Anybody see any? Seeing none, I ask Manager May to please read.
On the consent agenda this evening, first, our village board minutes, board to consider approving the minutes of the village board meeting held November 5th, 2020. This is followed by finance ordinance number 14 in the amount of $1,816,765.09. Several purchase orders, first one, NCR Payment Solutions, $42,000, this is the credit card fee assessments for the remainder of the fiscal year for the utility billing and parking tickets. Next purchase order, Marathon Petroleum, $120,000. We normally have a, this is for annual fuel purchases, we have normally have bulk fuel purchases from Bell Fuels that, when we used to be able to dispense out of our own facility, when that got closed, we've been using the corporate account. So whereas this purchase order is a new amount, it does supersede the other one that was previously approved. Third is Baxter Woodman, $24,300 for 63rd Street Water Mine Extension Project. Next is DuPage Metropolitan Enforcement Group, DUMEG, $108,284, that represents the DUMEG pass-through. Next purchase order, Industrial Organization, $24,000, this is a sergeant examination process related to the testing process for promotions. Last purchase order is Zoll Medical Corporation, $30,706.26, is a replacement cardiac monitor and defibrillator, this was discussed last at the Public Safety Committee meeting, $25,000 of that amount will come from funds set aside with the, that we received from the dissolution of the Northwestmont Fire Protection District. The total of those purchase orders was $349,290.26, brings the total of the purchase orders together with finance ordinance number 14 to $2,166,055.35. That's the entire consent agenda.
Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Barker.
Second, Nero.
Motion been made in second, on to question. Seeing none, I'd ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to new business, proposed aggregate tax levy. Board to consider a motion determining the proposed aggregate tax levy. Draxler Parker.
So this is something that was discussed in more detail at the Administration and Finance Committee, but as a brief overview, this is the first step in the property tax levy process for this year. So assuming we determine this, if it stays at the 4.99%, under the 5%, we're not required to hold a public hearing for this tax levy. Typically, the board has still published a notice in the legal section to let people know they could come to attend a public hearing, we hold a public hearing just in case anyone wants to come and attend, even though we're not legally required to based on that amount. So I assume we'll probably continue the same practice this year, and we are levying the 9.3 million amount, though we expect to really get about 9.1 million, which includes about $2 million worth of the library's levy.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed tax levy?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made in second, on to question. We will have a public hearing before it's passed next month?
Yes, so on the December 17th meeting is when we were going to have it.
Okay, December 17th.
We also want to make sure we review the ad that we post in the paper.
Do we put, yes.
Under review, Spencer has drafted it.
Very good. Any other comments? I ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Another B, new business B, proposed aggregate tax levy for the Westmont Special Service Area 2. Board to consider a motion determining the proposed aggregate levy for Westmont Special Service Area 2. Assistant Manager Parker.
So the Special Service Area 2 is the area that was formerly covered by the Northwestmont Fire Protection District, this is where we got the agreement with the county that we are providing fire protection service in that area, and we levy a special service area tax on the residents in that area. As was discussed when we adopted the Special Service Area, initially, the residents in that area paid less than the residents of the village, and so we adopted a plan over which a series of five years, they'd be brought up to paying the same rate. Because of that, the amount that they pay each year is going up by more than 5%, because we have to hit that target of getting closer to where the village residents pay. And so with that, you'll see there's a roughly 16.7% increase in the levy amount for that, that is triggering the truth in taxation, and so there'll be a formal notice published in the paper in the required section for the truth in taxation items.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Trustee Nero, motion been made in second, any comments? This will also be published with the border and...
Yes, so this is the one that will be published with the special border and in a separate section, as opposed to where people usually look for legal notices about meetings. Our optional one will probably be published in the classified section, the legal notices section, where people usually look for those.
Mayor, these people, or Spencer, these people are aware that this is expected, it's not a surprise to them.
They were informed about it, they've known about it for the last couple of years as we've had the increases, they should not be surprised about it.
Right, ongoing discussions when they were dissolved.
Yeah, there was notice published in the newspaper and a hearing that was conducted, and they had the chance to object to the formation of the SSA by a vote of 51% or more of the residents living in that area, they did not do so. The publication notice and the public hearing discussed the rate increase over the years to equal ultimately with the village residents pay.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business C, intergovernmental agreement with DuPage County. Board to consider ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement, an IGA, with DuPage County for the installation and maintenance of folding stop signs at signalized county highway intersections. And I ask Director Ramsey for additional information.
Thank you, Mayor. This IGA states that the Village of Westmont will be responsible for the entire cost of installation and maintenance of the emergency folding stop signs at every county intersection in Westmont. The county will still have the right to have the village correct any operational compliance issues with these stop signs. This is something that we, you know, put down when the power goes out, when the stoplights go out, we fold the signs down so people know to stop at every intersection. Now the county is having us be responsible for the maintenance and the installation of all these signs moving forward.
Do I have a motion to approve the IGA?
A motion to approve. Second, Nero.
Motion been made in second, to approve, any questions? No questions, comments, I'd ask for a...
How many locations are involved?
Yes, Trustee Brady, you got a question?
Yeah, how many locations are involved with these signs? If I remember, if I counted right, there's four on 63rd Street and seven, or I'm sorry, four, one, two, three, four, five, I believe, on Cass. Manager May might know exactly the right amount, but I think there's five on Cass and four on 63rd Street.
Okay, thank you.
Is there two on Ogden?
Ogden Avenue is the Illinois Department of Transportation, so the DuPage County highways are 63rd Street, 55th Street, which is, the signal is the Cass Avenue one. So everything along 63rd Street, then south on Cass, 65th, 67th, those are county-owned and maintained traffic signals, we are asking to maintain the folding stop signs on their equipment.
And the, just a point of clarification, the village, the snow season coming, those areas are plowed by either the county or the state?
The county highways that I mentioned are the county and the sole state highway in, is actually a U.S. highway, U.S. 34, Ogden Avenue, is plowed and maintained by IDOT.
IDOT, okay. Any other comments? I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Brady.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Did we lose him?
No, I could barely hear.
No, yes.
All right, thank you. Motion passes. New business D, the boundary line agreement with Willowbrook. It's the Third Amendment. Board to consider ordinance authorizing amendment to the intergovernmental jurisdictional boundary line agreement with the Village of Willowbrook. Village Manager May?
Thank you, Mayor. The, in between communities, in between Village of Westmont and our neighbors, there are pockets of unincorporated parcels. This particular one is in and around the, near the area of Richmond and 63rd Street. And in this unincorporated area, through all, anywhere where we've got territories with each of our municipalities, we have a formal boundary agreement executed that involves where we will incorporate up to, up to that boundary line, and then the other territories go to the other community. And it's for all good planning purposes that these were set some time ago. On 63rd Street itself, there is, there are three parcels owned by the same entity adjacent each other that would like to voluntarily incorporate into the Village of Westmont. One of those three parcels, even though it's common ownership, is on the Willowbrook side of the boundary agreement. So we've already met and discussed it with Willowbrook. They're open to it, but it requires our formal agreement by both communities to amend the boundary so that we can proceed with that annexation. The address is 409 West 63rd Street. In particular, is the parcel in question. That is a Willowbrook mailing address.
It'll still have a Willowbrook mailing address?
Yeah, that is unchanged with.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion's been made in second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business E, economic relief program amendment. Board to consider ordinance amending the Village of Westmont Economic Relief Program to include a community event continuity grant. And I'd ask Assistant Village Manager Parker for some additional information.
So this is a follow-up to discussions that have occurred at the Administration Finance Committees in the past. The Village Board had adopted, set aside some funds for some grants. We've operationalized those in an outdoor seating grant and then a retail business grant. And at a prior Administration Finance Committee, the Village Board determined that it would be ideal to create another grant specifically to assist some service organizations that typically provide community events, and the purpose that they often use the community events for is to obtain funding. And so, and they're able to continue to serve the community with that funding. And so the village determined that, kind of two pieces. Number one is we want to make sure these entities continue so they can continue to provide these community events going forward, but also to be able to assist them in this difficult time since they did not have that revenue generating opportunity of the special events. And so this grant would be to those entities and to, we would determine them based on those entities that have received Hotel Motel grants from us in the past to put on these special events, non-governmental entities. And so that's how we're determining it, and then we would do a grant for those entities. So it would be added on to our grant program.
And the total amount?
The total amount would be roughly $5,000, about $2,500 to, there would be two that this would apply to.
Two service companies, the Lions and the Rotary.
Yes, those are the ones that have received it in the prior year.
And again, they, all the money they raise goes right back into the community. So do I have a motion to approve the ordinance?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Any additional comments? Seeing none, roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Now that item and the next two are items that the village and I know Trustee Nero, Trustee Barry, and Trustee Addington was very instrumental in setting aside funds for economic relief. So the second new business F is COVID-19 Economic Assistant Payments. Board to consider ordinance authorizing COVID-19 Economic Assistant Payments to Westmont businesses that pay places for eating tax. Finance Director Parker?
So this is also a continuation of the economic assistance program the village adopted to be able to try to assist businesses during this difficult pandemic. And as indicated, this one is targeted for businesses that pay places for eating tax, and the payment would be an amount equivalent to 50% of what they had contributed in places for eating tax in fiscal year 1920 capped at $1,000. So for many restaurants, that would be a thousand, a payment of $1,000. For restaurants that have contributed less than $2,000 in places for eating tax during last fiscal year, they would receive 50% of what they contributed.
Do I have a motion to approve?
A motion to approve.
Second, Little?
Second.
Motion made in second. Comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business G, refund of fees. Board to consider ordinance approving the following. A refund of paid 2020 business license fees for all businesses established by March 1st, 2020. Partial refund of paid 2020 liquor license fees for all restaurants and bars which hold a Class 1, 2, 3, 4, or 8, and there's another one we're adding to it, 14? And 14 liquor licenses established by March 1st, 2020. And I'd ask Assistant Village Manager Parker?
So as with the last two items, this is also part of the economic assistance program the village is doing to try to help businesses in our community. The piece of the business licenses is something that's been identified by the Village Board since right after the budget was passed, once we identified the desire to assist these businesses. And so that's been on the, in the plans for a long time and is budgeted. The refund of the liquor license fees is something that is, we had also budgeted another section for these grants that we've already talked about. In a conversation with a restaurant group, one of the clear indications of something that would be helpful to them would be something dealing with the liquor licenses. So we've identified the classes that specifically tie to restaurants and bars and, in the classes 1, 2, 3, 4, and 8. And then since the agenda had been written, the governor issued some additional mitigations, and we were approached by another business whose primary business, in addition to the restaurant and bar piece, was also significantly impacted by the additional mitigations, and so that's the reason for the addition of Class 14. So it would be, all business license holders would be refunded. We've got about 670 businesses in town that would be receiving that. And then the additional ones would just be for those specific, the liquor licenses would just be for those specific holders of those licenses listed, and there's about 35 of those.
Very good. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second to approve. Comments? Trustee Barker?
I'd just like to say, you know, as Chairman of Westmont First, I'm very proud of the fact that the board and the mayor and the staff support the local businesses in this way, and we've come up with some real concrete ways to help them. And I'm certain that if there's more things that come, are identified in the next few months or whatever, we'd be happy to hear about that. It really demonstrates that we're here to help and partner with them, and we value our local businesses, and I think all three of these programs actually do the right thing and reflect well on all of us. So thank you.
Any other comments? I do have to say that a couple of these were part of recommendations by the restaurant group. When we met with them, they suggested these couple items, and I think the board, it was budgeted, and I'm very pleased that the board feels it's important to refund. I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New business H, utility billing and mailing service amendment. Board to consider ordinance amending the agreement with Enfulsend to provide for e-billing services. Finance Director Parker?
This was also discussed in detail at the Administration Finance Committee, but the very short version is that the current system that our residents and businesses are using to pay their water bills does not allow them to actually see their bill. And so even if people who had previously signed up for e-billing are receiving hard copies of their bills in the mail, they would prefer to receive, there are many people who would prefer to receive them via email. This amendment allows our company that mails the bills to send them via email to people that have requested it. And it ends up saving the village money because it's lower cost than actually the mailing.
And the name is Enfulsend?
Enfulsend.
Yep. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second to approve. Comments? Seeing none, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Oh, go ahead, Trustee Brady.
Okay. I understand that he was saying that Barker, it would send an email out versus sending out the mailed bill, is that correct?
Yes, so several months ago, we had to change our system. The old system, the way that it worked was if people had asked to have an email sent instead of a hard copy bill, they would receive an email that would tell them to go to a website. They would go to the website. On that website, they could see their bill and see how many gallons they used and why they got that amount. Several months ago, that system was discontinued, and the new system that we were able to go with in enough time to get on before the system ended, the system that we're able to use now provides some good methods for people to make payments when they go on to the website. It will tell them how much they owe, but it does not inform them why they owe that amount. So it doesn't list how many gallons of water they used or any of those things. Because that's important for people to know, we have been sending hard copies of bills even to the people who asked initially to just get an email. Under the new system, they'll get an email with a copy of the bill, and then to make the payment be directed to the website that just allows them to make a payment. But at least they'll be able to get a copy of their bill in their email.
What if a person does have an email?
So it's only for people that have specifically asked to just get it by email instead of through the mail. So most people still get it through the mail, but those that want it through email can now get it through email again.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no, no more questions, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to miscellaneous, I have one item, and I want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving. So please, follow the instructions that the state has given you and that Chief Riley has, so we all can remain safe and enjoy the holidays. Anybody else got anything? Trustee Little?
Mayor, thank you. I just wanted to offer the Michaelick family my sincere condolences on the loss of the patriarch, Jerry. He passed away Tuesday morning.
And his mom was a longtime employee here years ago in the clerk's office. Any other miscellaneous? Since there's no executive session, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Little?
Second, Barker.
Motion made in second to adjourn, I'd ask for a roll call, please. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Brady?
Yes.
Again, I'd like to thank everybody for participating tonight, and this meeting is adjourned.